All right, I have 6:30, I've called the meeting to order. I'd ask that you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our first order of business is, as always, approval of the agenda. I know we have some, a couple of amendments to put on there. So I'll open it up for discussion. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda with some additions.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, it's open for discussion. Do we have a request for any amendments to the, to the agenda? Sean?
Um, I'd like to add a discussion of, of Resolution honoring Melissa Schlag for this Sunday.
Okay. Kate, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
All right, I have one item to add, it's an additional appointment for Maurice Adams to the Regional Planning Committee. If there are no other amendments, I'll call for a vote on the agenda as amended. All in favor of passing the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To unanimously, the agenda is approved as, as amended. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve, the first one being a regular meeting, last month's meeting, September 14th. I have a motion to approve the agenda, the minutes for September 14th meeting.
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to approve September 14th, 2020 meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you Kate. The item is now open for discussion, any amendments to those minutes?
No, I didn't have any.
All right, as there are no amendments to the minutes, no further discussion, I'll call for Okay, once again, please, if you are not addressing the board, please put your phones on mute or computers. I call for vote to approve the September 14th regular Board of Selectmen's meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. All right, next set of minutes we have was a special Board of Selectmen's needed, meeting was held on September 23rd primarily to just, to schedule a town meeting and a public hearing, and an insert for the absentee ballot application mailings, or the ballot itself, not the application. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 23rd meeting?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for September 23rd meeting.
Thank you Sean, any discussion, any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes?
No, I didn't have any.
I had none, Sean, anything?
No, I had none, sorry.
All right, since there are no amendments to the minutes, I call for a vote to approve the September 23rd Special Board of Selectmen meeting minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, thank you, motion carried unanimously. All right, we'll now open for public comment. I would ask, if you would, to please identify yourself because this meeting is being recorded, people will be looking at it later. I'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, and addressing an item on the agenda, is there any public comment?
Hi, this is Sandra Olson. And I'm, I'm, sorry, I'm having trouble with my, what do you call it, video, so I had to call in, but I can see some of you guys. Um, anyway, so, um, is this, I, this is the very first I heard, is, is there any public comment, and so I have no idea, is this a comment on Melissa Schlag, or? I, I'm not sure what I'm commenting on, I'm sorry.
Right, Sandy, yes, you can comment on Melissa Schlag's, if you would like.
Um, were we gonna do that later, or is that what we're doing, I'm sorry? I, go ahead.
Okay, let me just explain, public comment is a time where we will take comments from the public on, on the topics, you're limited to three minutes, you are not gonna have a chance to discuss the item separately when we get to it, those discussions are reserved for board members, so if you would like to make a comment pertinent to Melissa's resolution, the appointments of the two individuals we were talking about appointing to the various boards, now is the time to do that. Would that, Sandy, does that answer your question?
No, I'll, I'll make a, a quick comment, um, I, uh, I definitely agree that a day to honor or show tribute to Melissa and what she's done for the town is, um, I, I absolutely agree with it, and I kind of hate to bring this subject up, but to me, it meant a whole lot, um, because I kind of almost assumed that, that what people called her disrespect for the flag would be called as a thing like, how could we honor someone, but I had personally called Melissa to thank her, um, for being that person that would stand up against injustice. And I had decided that I would quickly quote the, um, National, I mean, the National Football League, um, commissioner, when he said, "We were wrong for not listening to the NFL players earlier," and encouraged them all to speak out and peacefully protest. And, um, I felt that her resistance was silent and very respectful, and I would like for anyone who questions that respectfulness to tell me when the last time that they would take a knee to, um, against, or for anything that they didn't fully respect, and she did always stand boldly and fight for what she believed was right, and so I, again, will say, I do believe that she deserves a day to be honored. Thank you.
Thank you Sandy, other comments?
I'd like to also speak on behalf of Melissa.
All right, Joe, and then Kate, I saw you had your hand up.
Oh.
Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, um, okay, so I just wanna, you know, offer my support as well to, you know, dedicating a day to Melissa. Uh, her environmental contributions throughout the years, meant a lot for our town, um, from, you know, the Higginham Cove, to Eagle Landing, um, and many other projects that she had a hand in. I think we were, you know, lucky to have her on our team for all those years, and, uh, she will be missed, thank you.
Thank you Joe, Kate?
Yeah, can I have his last name for the record? Joe who?
Rizzo, Rizzo, R-I-Z-Z-O.
Thank you.
All right, Kate, if you'd start first and last name, please, and then your comment.
Um, this is Kate Westling, and my comments in support of a day of remembrance for Melissa really are to say that the resolution brings to the fore her strongest contributions to the town, and they happen to be contributions that will be lasting ones, so, and I think it's important in a time when we're all concerned both about the environment and its future, and also the future of the town as a place that may be developed for people to come and enjoy the natural beauty that is here. So, for two reasons, I think those activities on her part will have a lasting effect for the town, um, its people now and in the future, so I think it's a worthy reason for having a commemoration day.
Okay, thank you Kate, Tanya, and Peter.
I'm gonna try to get our mic on, hold on a second.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
No, just come over here, it's not ever come to my computer.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Tanya, we can hear you.
Okay. I respectfully urge the Board of Selectmen to please promote this Sunday, October 18th, 2020, as Melissa J. Schlag Day. It is the appropriate day, as many of us are gathering to remember her many important environmental and conservational accomplishments in and around Haddam, and it is a time when we are going to say goodbye. Your magnanimous gesture of naming October 18th Melissa J. Schlag Day will be a great credit to this board. You will be remembered as a board who led the way with a true bipartisan goodwill and healing effort at this time when Haddam and our country need this most, so I thank you for your consideration and to please make it for this Sunday.
Thank you Tanya, Peter?
Hi, Peter Baird, I'd also like to speak in favor of, of naming this day Melissa Schlag Day for this year, she, um, she, even her, her direst opponents would agree that she had a real passion for Haddam and for not only environment, but for the, but for the town itself, and she, um, I take what Kate said, her, her lasting legacy will be and they setting a precedent that, that around swapping, you know, public land for, for private land, and, uh, and also her kind of government and, and recording, you know, making an effort to record meetings so they were accessible to everyone, which is important thing, it's become important now in the middle of the pandemic too, so. Like to, uh, she, uh, she, she, she was a controversial figure for sure, um, and actually didn't, I'm saying this, I didn't personally agree with her decision to kneel either. Um, I respected her right to do it, but actually, I agree with it, um, but I still, you know, I respected her, um, what she's done for this town, to a great deal.
Okay, thank you Peter.
Can I say one thing?
All right, sure, go ahead Sean.
Yeah, just, um, just so everybody knows that what I'm going to be proposing later on has nothing to do with any controversies or anything like that, it really doesn't, it's it's just contribution, just, so, just so it's clear. We're just, I, I would just like to focus on her um, conservation work, and also her, uh, her dedication and, and contribution to town, so, just for clear on that.
Thank you Sean, Ralph?
Yes, I, I wanted to amplify something that Peter had said, I, I'm also speaking in support of, uh, dedicating the day, um, I think her attendance at so many meetings, and her dedication in taping those meetings to provide an opportunity for the town to, to, to view the meetings, so many, so many, many meetings, uh, to allow our town to, to, um, to participate uh, at all the various meetings that she taped for our town, um, to, to be able to view and participate in the democratic process. I, I mean, the dedication that that required, I, I can't even imagine, um, the, the dedication that that required, um, I, it just is, is astounding to me. And so I, I just wanted to amplify that, because I don't know that that gets enough credit, so I wanted to, um, to, to, to restate what Peter had said.
Okay, thank you Ralph, and for the record, your last name, please?
Liviari, L-I-V-I-E-R-I.
Thank you, Marge, the ball, did you see your hand?
Thank you, you know, I've lived in Haddam a long time, and I'm happy and always pleased that good things happen here, and I know it's good people behind those good things, and I think Melissa is one of those people. And, not mentioned here, this evening is something that may seem small, but was really important. Had, Haddam has its, had its Haddam Senior Handbook, because Melissa helped put it there. She worked with the Committee on Aging. They put together a, a document that gave access to people who make a real difference in the lives of seniors. It was her interest, her skills, and her efforts that made the Haddam Senior Handbook come alive, and it had two additions, the last one was in, I think, September of 2019, that's it, yes, September, so a year ago. I stand with the others in thinking that this would be a very good time to recognize someone who's made a real difference in the town of Haddam, a real difference for so many of us, and thank you.
Thank you Marge, any other public comment?
Yeah.
And then Susan, I see yours.
Hi, Robin Spencer Klimazeski. And I also agree, um, we definitely need a day to, um, you know, remember Melissa. She, um, did so much for this town, I was, I grew up in this town, and she actually knew more about it than I did. Um, I never knew anyone that had any more passion for Haddam. Um, as you, most of you know, she helped restore the Shad Shack, or get the, get it going, and if it wasn't for her, we never would have got this far. And she was there right alongside me every Saturday during the summer of 2019, not feeling good, and working just as hard as anyone else could use any tool that any man could. And, um, I just know that I'm forever grateful for her, and the reason that she wanted the Shad Shack restored is because of her love of Haddam, the love of Shad, and she wanted people to, it, to be a, for it to be a destination spot so people could come and learn about Shad and Haddam history, thank you.
Thank you Robin, any other, oh, Susan, I said you were next, sorry. Susan, you've got to unmute your microphone.
How's that, is that better?
That's good, I can hear you now, thank you.
Okay, I have to get into the, the technology.
Takes a while.
I'm, I'm learning, but anyhow, I, I definitely support, uh, naming, uh, next Sunday, uh, Melissa Schlag Day. Uh, I didn't even know Melissa, uh, about 10 years ago, and my niece was homeless, her, her home burned down. And, uh, it was in Iverton, and Melissa at that time was working, um, with her home, uh, service business, and she donated so many things to my niece, who did, she did not even know me, she did not know, um, my niece. Uh, but I can't tell you how much she donated, or found, uh, from some other source for my niece, I'm forever grateful, as is my niece. And of course, the Shad Shack, the jail. Uh, she loved Haddam. She kept on top of everything in adversity, even during when she was having her chemo. Stop the swap, how can we forget that? I worked with her on that actively. I just feel like this, uh, this soul deserves recognition this coming Sunday. And I'm speaking in favor of naming the day Melissa Schlag Day, thank you.
All right, thank you, and Susan, for your record, the record, your last name, please.
Uh, Susan Costa.
Thank you. Other public, other public comments, Neil?
Good evening, um, I've brought this up before with the Board of Selectmen, with, uh, the passing of Phil Goff for the bridge by the cove to be named for him, also with, um, Gunner for the transfer station. And I didn't make the recommendation, if possible, I don't know how this would work, from the entrance to Eagle's Landing, down to the bend, if it can be possibly named, uh, Schlag Way, which would be appropriate, because she did everything her way that she found fit for the town. And/or possibly for the senior center to be, I don't know if it can be done, but the Melissa Schlag Memorial Senior Center. Just a suggestion, so take it a little bit step farther than Sunday, something that we have permanent, that we always can go and remember her by, and, um, like others said, she, she wore this town on her, on her heart. That's all I have.
All right, thank you Neil, other public comment?
This is Sherri Baxley. I, I support that.
Okay, thank you Susan, I had another comment, please?
This is Sherri Baxley.
Okay, well, well, this is, it's getting on, if you have video, if you, we can see you, if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand. And then I'll get to the people who are just callers. All right, Tim, yours was the first one, I saw Tim turn, go ahead, please.
Yes, hi, Tim, thank you. Um, Neil, I think what you proposed is a wonderful thing. Um, you know, whether you are a true complete believer in everything Melissa did or not, what you cannot escape is her passion for the town, as you all have said, and her commitment to say, "I want to make a difference," and I think it doesn't matter where you sit on the political spectrum, we all want to make this place a better place, and I think that she is exemplary of doing that, regardless of where you come from, so to the extent to which we can memorialize her, not in a day, but also in a place, is a lovely idea, thanks, Bob.
Thank you Tim, Aaron, did I see your hand? Moriarty? Yeah, go ahead Aaron.
Thank you.
Full name for the board, for the record, please.
My name is Erin Moriarty. Uh, and I too support the motion to make Sunday, October 18th, the day to honor Melissa Schlag. She has done so much for our town and for individuals, without ever expecting praise or recognition in return. She used her political abilities and her knowledge of the land conservation process to help us protect many special lands that will keep Haddam beautiful and natural for all time. Um, and I'd like to just say that Melissa's character shines bright with courage, passion, intelligence, and compassion. And as a person with concerns about the state of things nationally and globally, Melissa really reminds me that the biggest changes and most important work happens here at the local level, and that's what keeps me going on. She never stopped working for Haddam, as everyone said, and her resilience and dedication should be honored. Thank you.
Thank you Erin. Other comments?
Carol Anne Spencer. I agree with the day for Melissa, also a tribute for Phil and for Gunner, thank you.
Thank you, other comments?
Sherri Baxley, I would like to echo a lot of the other people that, um, I would like this Sunday to be named Melissa Schlag Day, to honor her for her dedication and service to the town in all the things she's done with, as many people have mentioned, taping the meetings and providing them. Uh, in addition to what Marge said, she also chaired the Committee for the Senior Tax Code and, and making sure that the seniors had tax relief, and all her work in the environmental, and, um, I, I hope that our town honors her by calling this Sunday after her.
Thank you Sherri, anybody else? All right, seeing none, if, again, a couple of people still have their microphones on.
There was somebody, I see somebody, Stacy Grimaldi, down in the corner, had her hand raised on the video.
I'm sorry, Stacy, did you want to make a comment?
I did, thank you very much, thank you Kate, um, I am also in favor of naming Sunday, October 18th, Melissa Schlag Day. Um, Melissa was a friend of mine, and I happened to email her a concern I had about a recycling issue, when she was first selectman. And, um, darned if that woman didn't snap me up to be on a committee. Um, and I hate politics. Uh, and she managed to pull me in and get me involved in a committee, and I think that speaks to her dedication, and her, um, her ability to work with all kinds of people, and again, I would like to echo what Mr. Liviari said about, um, all her dedication to taping the meetings, and what Tanya Moriarty said about all, and Ms. Moriarty said about all her dedication to environmental aspects of the town. Um, so I would like to go on record, uh, as being in favor of naming Sunday, Melissa Schlag Day. And again, my name is Stacy Grimaldi.
Thank you Stacy, did I miss anybody else? All right, not seeing any, some people still have microphones live, again, please mute your microphone, just so we don't get interference. Uh, Neil, just to your points, a couple of things, Marge, the ball, please correct me, but isn't this, please, the senior center is already dedicated to Tony Bondi? Marge is indicating yes. And the, excuse me, Eagle Ax, Eagle Landing Access is state property, I don't know if we'd have any luck with that, but that doesn't mean there isn't something else appropriate we can find along those lines. All right, thank you all for your public comment, and I'm very pleased with how well overall we're able to manage that. Uh, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Selectmen's Update. I, I will start with my overview, I would invite comments from either of my two fellow selectmen as I go through it, or if you have anything to add at the end. Projects, I'll start with Scoville Ho. Uh, if you've been following it on Facebook, Will Warner has been posting it, but the environmental and structural assessment of Scoville Ho, uh, is being conducted surprisingly, at least surprisingly to me. Uh, they didn't come across any obvious problems, we had all heard horror stories about what's buried in the pond area, and everything else, we're still waiting to get lab results back from coring, so they may turn up something. But, uh, the, our one area we're particularly concerned about was the pond, I know the state took five 55 gallon drums out of there a number of, number of years ago, and it's all suspicious, there were more. Uh, the test pits, there were five of them in the pond area, they went down 25 feet, found nothing of any real concern, again, we're waiting for boring samples. Yeah, I agree with you Marge, I'm shocked. They did find a stash of road salt, about four feet deep at one point on the property, it might be something we can salvage if we purchase the property for our use. Uh, there's some hydrocarbon oil, there was a hydraulic lift that probably has some contaminants to worry about. But as I've said, so far, it has been a pleasantly surprising report from the grounds of Scoville Hall, they found fill and construction debris, but everything was clean, no environmental issues yet. Tylerville Water, uh, any of you who've been through Tylerville in the last few days have noticed they're paving the road again. This is the final paving to meet the state requirements, once that's done, and I don't have an end date for it, but it shouldn't be that long, uh, the paving and the road disturbances will be done. This project probably unfortunately will continue on until the spring, there are some problems with hookups and well abandonments, but those are off the roadway and shouldn't provide, cause any disruption for people in the Tylerville area. I'd also like to note that, uh, they were doing a hydrant, fire hydrant relocation by River House. That's because of a potential conflict with the sidewalks that we're looking at on Bridge Road. And the state paid the, will pay the relocation cost, it was relatively minimal, but I was glad the state said they would pick that up. Rossi Property, nothing new has started with that, we did get the, at the last Board of Selectment meeting, approval for the purchase and sale agreement, I'm just, we're looking through a proposal from Ty and Bond to do the environmental assessment. Uh, and I've also talked with Board of Finance, or the Chairman of the Board of Finance on financing it. I expect we will be moving forward with the purchase and sale agreement, uh, this month. Roadwork, nothing new to the report there, Lieutenant Chubel Road is still scheduled to be done this year, it's the next one on tap. Uh, as we mentioned in last month's meeting, town crew has to go in there and raise some catch basins, I think six of them. Uh, once that's done, the contractor can go in and do the road itself. We are also looking to have old Turnpike Road paved by a contractor. Initially, that was going to be done by the town crew, uh, but because of the delays caused by the, actually, a couple of storms we've had now, if we're gonna get that done, we're gonna have to contract, we do have money in the Town Aid Road Fund to cover that. New project, just quickly to talk about, I had a meeting about a week ago with the state and some other stakeholders on the proposed roundabouts, you may have heard about, the state wants to do on Route 154 in Tylerville at the intersection with the 82 connector to Route 9, and onto Bridge Road. The state wants to do on Route 154 in Tylerville at the intersection with the 82 connector to Route 9 and onto Bridge Road. The state is really pushing for roundabouts to replace T intersections, they're safer in case of accidents because they're more angular than, than a T bone type accident. There are also, once people get used to them, supposed to improve the flow of traffic. The state is designing those two roundabouts, I hadn't heard anything about them for quite a while, didn't know the status of the project, but they assured us it's moving forward. The project will include a replacement for the bridge that goes over Clark Creek, that's just before, if you're southbound, you get to the Route 82, Route 9 connector. They're going to build an entirely new bridge, they're also going to relocate it so that the bridge rebuild in and of itself won't hold up traffic. They hope to hold a public information session on the design and take some input from the public sometime this spring. Construction is slated right now to start in April of 2023 and continue until November of 2024. The bad news, as far as I'm concerned, is that this will be immediately following the major reconstruction they do on the bridge, Swing Bridge. With all the traffic and business problems that's going to create. And that's going to start supposedly shortly, it'll be a while, not immediately, but on the heels of Tylerville Water. That area is seeing a lot of work and it makes a lot of issues for the business. Other things to make you aware of, public health wise, and I don't have anybody here yet from Board of Health, they were scheduled, they were invited to join the meeting. As I said last month, continuing to be concerned on the uptick we're seeing in town on the COVID-19 cases. Last month, I told you we had 53 cases, we've added nine more cases in the month since I talked to you last. 62 cases right now, two of them look like the family spread, the others are all individual, as far as I know. Again, I would just ask people, you know, please wear a mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, be aware of that. Be particularly careful at indoor spaces where the, the virus can hang in the air for a while, depending on how well ventilated it is. I know there are people who aren't and won't wear masks, and I'm not going to convince them otherwise, so please just be mindful of your own health and those of others.
Bob, can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
This is Kate. The, do you know the age range of the new cases? Like do, is it tending to be younger individuals, older individuals? Do they report on that?
The two family spread cases are siblings, they're, they're children. My memory serves me right, they're the first two children cases we've seen. And neither, neither one was in school, one wasn't feeling well, was isolated, and then the sibling got infected, so it's not affecting the school district at all, which was good news. The other ones, the age range are scattered, I'd have to take a look at them, I know we've had some older people, I know we've had some young people, twenties and thirties.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering if it was stemming from back to school, but it doesn't sound like it. Thank you.
No, it doesn't seem to be a school connection at all. A couple of other things to talk about, upcoming elections, just to make you aware. Town Clerk's Office to date has received approximately 1,500 requests for absentee ballots. That's up over, normal year is a 400 to 500 range, so you can see there's a definite increase there. With the exception possibly of some requests that have come in recently, the ballots have already all gone out. And to date, we have received 618 ballots returned to the Town Clerk's Office. Last point I want to make, I had a meeting and have been working with the Town Committee Chair for both the Republican and Democrat Parties. To take a look at and revise our town's ethic and social media policies as need be, the Town Attorney is also involved in that. Revising it where necessary, and we're also discussing holding an annual update for elected and appointed officials, and particularly important, right after elections, the, the ethics rules, even for very ethical people, are differ between government and business. If you haven't been in government, some of the things will, would probably surprise you, so we want to make sure everyone is aware of that. And that's all I have, I would open it up to any other comment, Kate or Sean?
I just want to thank Bill Warner for all his work on the projects we have going downtown Higginham Center. They're moving along nicely, and the reports I'm getting back are wonderful, but just want to thank Bill for that.
All right, Bill, since I see you're on and I joined, I did discuss the projects, is there anything you want to add about any of the projects that we're working on, you're working on?
Uh, no, not, not off the top of my head, Bob.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, Kate, do you have anything to add?
Um, I do, just quickly, the farmer's market wrapped up last Friday, October 9th. We had a very successful season. A quick shout out to some of our very dedicated volunteers. Kristy Benson was our Market Master, and for those who don't know, Kristy actually moved to town in March of this year, March 2020. Kristy arrived in Hattam, Connecticut, and somehow got thrown into coordinating an entire and wildly successful farmer's market. So thank you very much Kristy, and to her husband Frank. And also, a few EDC members who took a lot of time out of their summer to make sure they were there almost every Friday, if not every Friday. Prem Ethel, Cindy Sola, and Doreen Staskalounas were very instrumental, and we also had a couple high school girls, high school volunteers, who really made sure everything went very smoothly. So while we are wrapped up for the summer, there might be something in the works as far as a little closer to the holidays. And hopefully, we won't have this virus to worry about next year, so we can come back even bigger and better.
Okay, thank you Kate. All right, update part is complete, I will now turn it over to Jen Favolora for the Board, I assume Jen, you're doing it for the Board of Education update?
Yes, I'll, I'll give you the Board of Education. Hi everyone, I'm Jen Favolora from the Board of Ed. For the month of September, we recognized, the Board of Education and the Superintendent recognized and thanked Amy Perry and Sharon Temec for coordinating over 50 volunteers to sew nearly 4,700 cloth face masks for the students and staff of HK for their return to school. Amy began coordinating the effort in June to recruit volunteers and funding for the project. And then handed out tote bags full of supplies and, and cloth and everything they needed to all the community mask makers to make masks and fun prints and school colors of various sizes fitting pre-kindergarten students all the way through adults. So a huge effort and much gratitude to them. As for the school reopening, after months of planning, RSD 17 was very excited to welcome students back into schools for the first time since March 13th. The first four weeks in the hybrid model allowed for new systems and processes such as distancing, technology, transportation, and cleaning to be smoothed out with minimal impact on the students. On September 29th, grades 8K through 8 return to in-school learning five days a week with the option of remote learning still remaining for any family that chooses to do so. The high school remains in the hybrid model until the completion of the fieldhouse due to space limitations with social distance protocols that we have to follow. RSD 17 also applied for and was, was awarded a USDA waiver making school meals free for students until December 31st or until funds run out. Students in kindergarten through 5th grade receive breakfast, can receive breakfast and lunch for free, and middle school and high school students can receive free lunch. The waiver includes children under the age of 18 who attend HK schools, students who are remote learning, and children who are also not enrolled in the school system but reside in either Hattam or Killingworth. For our facilities, the fieldhouse renovations were delayed again when structural deficiencies were found in the original concrete subfloor that was poured when the fieldhouse was built over 40 years ago. Expansion joints were added and numerous cracks were filled, leveling tests identified varying point-to-point measurements to be amended in the surface. Additional spending was approved by the Board for the necessary repairs and reimbursement from the state is expected for those additional steps. The additional work has delayed the completion of the fieldhouse until mid-December. Our annual inspection of playground equipment noted safety issues with two playgrounds, the KES Wooden Playground and the preschool playground at Burr. Both playgrounds have been removed. And also in our facilities, required preparations were made to each of the buildings in accordance with rules and standards for building operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. Additional cleaning staff were outsourced, protective plexiglass guards were installed, signage for distancing and precautionary measures were also installed. Tents have been set up outside each of the schools to allow for mask breaks in inclement weather. Access furniture was removed from the buildings and stored on onsite containers, and the HVAC systems have been adjusted and filters replaced. In terms of finance, our finance committee, subcommittee has been keeping track of expenses and savings strictly due to COVID-19. In a very unexpected year, we're trying to keep specific tabs on everything. To date, 2021 COVID-related expenses include things like midday bus runs for kindergarten and first graders, technology upgrades, instructional supplies, outsourcing custodial staff, excuse me, custodial staff, and additional PPE. Expenses from July to September are at approximately $222,000, and COVID relief grant money will offset some of those expenses. For anybody that's interested, you can go to our website to review communications from the Superintendent, she puts all of them up there, including information on how positive COVID cases would be communicated to the school community, as well as how the high school instructional model continues through December. All under rsd17.org, under School Reopening Updates. And that is it. Happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you Jen. Kate, Sean, do you have anything?
I actually do have a question, and Jen, I'm not sure if you'll know this off the top of your head. But I know one of the biggest, probably the biggest increase in our school budget this year was actually related to special education needs, if I'm not mistaken. Any report or anything you know about any impact that COVID is having on that part of the budget specifically?
You know, I don't know specifically, um, in that line item. I do know, for example, ESY, our Extended School Year, which happens in school every summer, for anybody who needs to extend their school year. Did not, those costs were not in place the way they usually are, they were greatly reduced. I'm not going to even say what I think the cost was, the savings were, but that is one of the savings that we did actually see. In terms of all the other, those are still proceeding as normal, we're still outsourcing certain areas and we're still, um, going, everybody's going back to school in their own way, so as far as I know, but we will be getting a specific update to the Board of Education on our first meeting in November, if anybody wants to watch that and, and hear that as well.
Thank you.
This is Sean, just sort of keeping on that vein is, what is the anticipated impact on the budget this year? Because I know, I worked for the District of East Line, and the amount of money spent on technology to keep the kids engaged and involved on a daily basis was quite a bit. So I was just wondering, what kind of impact that is going to have and how we, are we looking to hopefully end in the red or the black or the red?
Um, so there's definitely an impact, and that's why we're so carefully monitoring it. We did a couple things with the, with the budget. First of all, we took the, took some money that was left over from last year and put it specifically in like a lockbox for COVID-related expenses for this year. If it does not get used, it goes back to the town, but it is a kind of a safety net, and you're exactly right, technology went, you know, has brought some of that up. Everything, every little thing has been counting as a COVID-related expense, from changing the filters to, to the school, you know, filtration systems to the level that they need to be. So we're tracking all of that. We did receive two grants, we received the CARES, CARES Act, I think that was in the 40,000s, and received another, the state grant, which we can use. So we do have money and we're, we're just, you know, measuring everything day to day, I can't predict what's going to happen, but we're definitely keeping a close eye on it, so we aren't, you know, running back to the towns, hopefully.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. Jen. Jen, one specific, I'm sorry, can I ask one question? I apologize, Bob, but do you have enough technology in people's homes in terms of computers, meaning as people think about, and some people do, as the seasons go by, get rid of computers and iPads? Do you have enough? Do you need more? Should we be saying, wait a minute, before I turn them into iMac, before I turn them into whatever, we should be giving them to the school?
Tim, actually, we purchased a Chromebook for each student with the, with the savings that we had from last year. So every student does have one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and Tim, yeah, I should have cut you off, just the rules for the public. The Board members can talk to the presenters and we can question back and forth, but this isn't open for questions and comments from the, from the people who are observing the meeting. Thank you. Thank you Jen. All right, next item on the list is the Public Health Update. Do we have anyone on from the Health District? Okay, apparently they weren't able to make it, we will have, see if we can get them on for next month. All right, next item are tax refunds. Kate, Sean, you should have gotten the listing of tax refunds, there are all motor vehicle tax refunds, or if I counted right, approximately 28 of them. Totals out to $3,646.02. All but two of those are for current year, those two, other two obviously are for prior years.
It's quite a few this month, a little increase there, but.
Yeah, it is, it is quite a few, but the tax bills went out, I think that's why we're all of a sudden seeing the, the rush of people who realize they didn't get their plates canceled or paperwork into the town resulting in some of this.
Yep.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds as presented by the Tax Collector?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve the, the tax refunds as presented.
All right, any further discussion on the issue? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried unanimously, thank you. All right, moving on to new business, let's take care of this. All right, the two appointments first, I think they will be quick, and then we will move on to the, the proclamation for Melissa. We have two appointments to make. The first one is for Richard Wells Jr. to the Board of Finance to replace Prem Ethel. Prem was on the Republican ticket, so it's a Republican seat to fill. Sam Crum, the Town Committee Chair, has recommended Richard. You have his background in your package. Can I have a motion to approve the appointment of Richard to the Board of Finance?
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to appoint Richard Wells to the Board of Finance.
Okay, thanks Kate, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion, Sean?
This is Sean, I've known Dick for quite a number of years, he'll, he'll be fine, he'll do a fine job.
Yeah, and this is Bob, I concur with that, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of appointing to Richard Wells Jr. to the Board of Finance, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried unanimously, thank you. The other appointment we have to make is as an alternate member to the Regional Planning Committee, this is under the auspices of the River Council of Government. Which basically is, well, it is all of Middlesex County and a couple of other towns. We have a full-time appointee to that, that's Raul Debrigard, and I'm not positive I got this last name, I pronounced it right. But apparently we've had this vacant, this alternate position has been vacant for untold period of time. Rivercar got in touch with me about filling it, they suggest Maurice Adams. I've talked with Maurice, he is willing. I know him personally and would recommend him. Can I have a motion to appoint Maurice Adams as an alternate representative from Hattam to the Regional Planning Committee?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Maurice to the Regional Planning Committee as an alternate.
Okay, thank you Sean, any discussion on the appointment?
Uh, this is Kate, just want to say thank you Maurice for being available to fill that spot. Uh, this is Kate. Just want to say thank you, Maurice, for, um, being available to fill that spot for us.
Yeah, Maurice, uh, this is Sean. He's always been engaged with, um, with everything going on in town, a big confined edition.
And, and I concur with that. Barring any further discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor of appointing Maurice Adams as an alternate to the Regional Planning Committee, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, our last item of new business is the resolution for Melissa. With that, I will turn it over to you, Sean, as was your item.
All right, thank you, Kate, for giving me this time. Um, just, you know, this is not, this resolution is not commentary, um, at all on any controversial issues that may have. Um, been associated with Melissa. It is just to try to highlight her, her dedication to the environmental, um, health of this town and all the, the historical health of this town. Um, you know, if I was to try, if I were to try to add everything into a resolution, it would be quite a, quite a lengthy resolution, kind of unruly. Um, so that, that's not what I propose, but I would like to read, um, I've gone through a couple of iterations, would like to read what I am proposing, just so everybody knows. Exactly what I'm talking about, if that's, uh, if that's okay with you two.
Yeah, please go ahead, Sean.
I, it follows the basic, uh, resolution format. Um, whereas Melissa J. Slough served as first electman of Hattam from, uh, two thousand thirteen to two thousand fifteen. And selectman in two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. Whereas Melissa J. Slough, uh, networked with officials at the Hartford, at the Hartford Capital to garner super funds to remove pollutants from the Higginham Cove. So it could be enjoyed as a public park. And whereas Melissa J. Slough. Successfully guided the Department of Environmental Protection and the Connecticut River Conservancy to have. Connecticut Yankee remove floating fluorescent orange barriers that blocked the entrance that was a public trust waters of the canal along the Connecticut River. And whereas Melissa J. Slough was instrumental in promoting the state purpose of forty-two acres of the Kuyaski property in Higginham. To be preserved as a state reserve open to the public as woods and hiking trails. And whereas Melissa J. Slough directed the Stop the Swap and Multitown, a Multitown protest. To, that saved Eagle Landing seventeen acres of publicly owned pristine Connecticut River land from falling into the hands of private developers. And whereas, even in her illness, Melissa J. Slough recently spearheaded a work party to restore Spencer Shad Shack. And whereas. She, whereas she was a dedicated public servant, uh, environmental advocate. And beloved friend of many of the town of Hattam and the region and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert McGarry, first electman of town of Hattam, do proclaim. Sunday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, is Melissa J. Slough Day. Um, so that's what I'm proposing, and, and, you know, I, I do understand. Um, the, the, the timing is, is, is quick, um, but there is memorial this, this Sunday. For her at, uh, Eagle Landing, and there'll be a gathering, and we're expecting, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty people. We're working through the DPD to get the, uh, proper permits and everything. Um, so I think it'd just be nice to honor her on that day. Um. You know, to her, um, shortly after, after her passing. She was a wonderful friend of this town and a dedicated, uh, public servant. I do also understand that we have not done this for any of the first election, and if anybody were to propose one for. Um, if a, a pass first electman, I'd be, I'd be right on board with, um, supporting that too. Um, past practice has to be, has to start somewhere, so we can start it with this one.
And Sean, I, I would concur with that. I mean, just because it hasn't been done in the past for something like this is not a reason not to do it in this instance.
As I said, um. I, I would be, um, you know, naive to say there wasn't controversy, but that's not what we should focus on as a town. We should focus on our, our positive, um. Uh, achievements, because if you look at any public servant, there's going to be controversy probably with almost any former first electman. So far, no with you, Bob, which is good, but it's early still.
Yeah, give it time, give it time, I'm sure.
So, you know, you'll look back at Tony or Liz or, maybe not Marge. I mean, Marge is, the halo is still there, I think, but, uh. But, um, you know, so I, if we do, if we, if we try to. I wouldn't say erase the negative, but let's not focus on it, get to move forward in the positive. That's my proposal. And. I would like, I'll make a motion after we can officially discuss it.
Yeah, should have done that already. Can I have, uh, a motion to. Endorse issuing the proclamation for malicious lag for. By the eighteenth.
I will, I will make that motion as, um. As submitted, the, the official, the, the resolution is submitted.
All right, thank you, Sean. Kate, comments?
Question, um, so October, October eighteenth, um. Is there any significance of that date beyond the memorial that's planned for Sunday?
No, no, there is none. This doesn't interfere with any other dates going on, um, and. Just since we are having people there, um, as a gathering, I thought it'd be appropriate that we can do it on that day since we will have people gathered. And, um, in a, in a time of remembrance for, uh, for, for Melissa.
Got it. Um. I will say, Sean, and I'm glad you touched on this, um, the timing of this, I recognize it, the timing is, works out to be the way that it is, um. I'm not sure I'd feel comfortable making a vote tonight, just because. It's the, the timing of it, you know, this wasn't published, this wasn't on the published agenda. It was added as an amendment tonight, um. And I personally, I would feel more comfortable voting on this next month. I know. That doesn't work with the timing of this memorial, but I feel like it's fair to the town and the community. To give other people the opportunity to comment on this, um, beyond, you know, we've heard a lot of comments tonight, um, but.
Who's that?
This wasn't a published item on the agenda. I don't think that's fair to the rest of the townspeople who didn't know that this was going to be discussed tonight. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to this day, and I actually, I also really liked Neil's suggestion. Um, about naming something after her, whether it be a park or a garden, um. I'm also on board with that, um, but where I stand right now, I'm honestly not comfortable voting on this tonight.
I'm, I'm free for, uh, for a special meeting anytime this week. Um, you name it, I'll do it. If you want to publish it tomorrow, we'll put it out there. I have no problem with it. I'm. I'm. I, I really like to see this move forward for the Sunday.
Yeah. Yeah, this is Bob. Sean, that was kind of my thought. Joanne, how much notice do we need for a, uh, special meeting?
Twenty-four hours.
All right, so we can, I am concerned that. All the support we've seen tonight, obviously, has come in, all the comments have been in support. I know there are people in town who would feel otherwise. This wasn't, uh, as Kate mentioned initially, it wasn't on the noticed agenda. Which is fine, we can amend an agenda as we have, but I do think the public should be given a chance to comment on both sides. Uh, I would much rather have a special meeting Friday, for example, just to discuss this topic. And let us notice it. People can make their comments, and then we can have the vote and either go forward, and we can still get it done in time for the. For the memorial service on Sunday.
All right, um. Okay, as long as, as long as we can get the meeting in before, then I, I will. I will amend my, my, my motion, um, but I'm. Really pushing for this Sunday, because this is really, I understand how people think it's a political thing. It's not a political thing. It's a hu- humanity thing. It's, it's honoring somebody's humanity towards the town. And I know there's going to be people who are going to bring ugly politics into it. This has nothing to do with ugly politics. It has to do with dedication. That's all I got to say about that.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Kate, are you available Friday for a meeting?
I am, yes, available all day.
Okay. Yeah, then I would suggest that we table this motion. We put out a notice for a special meeting on Friday, six-thirty, just to discuss. The proclamation. And we move forward from that point.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion now that we, um, that we tabled my, uh, my original, um, vote request and, uh. And look, and ask for a special town meeting on Friday.
Okay, all in favor of tabling this until a special town meeting can be scheduled this Friday for it, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried unanimously. Thank you all for the flexibility. I do appreciate all the public comments that we have received. Those are all the items on our agenda for tonight. So I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
This is Kate, motion to adjourn at seven-thirty.
Okay. Motion is made, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance and comments.